Okay, it is 6 o'clock. And it is June 6th. And the Select Board meeting is called to order. General Public Comment is first. Actually Chuck your...
No, you are on the Public Comment. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not on the agenda.
Okay, I thought we pushed it 6:05. Okay, go ahead.
So hopefully you all saw the email from Karen Horn. As the Harbor Committee is making a recommendation that the town grant CB Fiber $50,000, which will unlock a $50,000 matching grant from Vermont Community Broadband Board. And it is a little bit sensitive. So though we are also doing surveys for the community and so forth, for other ways we may recommend using the Harbor funds, the CB Fiber one is time-sensitive to get that matching grant. And so we are going ahead and making that recommendation. I provided Sasha with the documents that will need to be finalized, consigned, and so forth. So really my ask is review the documents. And in two weeks' time, I'll make sure we're on the agenda for an actual vote as to whether we want to receive that.
So that will be next meeting at 6:05?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the deadline for times? When you say time-sensitive, just so we know what we're working with.
So the deadline is when the funds run out for September 15th, whichever is sooner. Because BCDB put together a $1.5 million grant. And if other towns capitalize on it first, then we don't get the mountain grants.
So the sooner the better.
Sooner the better. We have commitments from four towns already. Little Sex has given us $100,000. Lister has given us $50,000. Wadbury has given us $53,000. And Cabot, I don't recall, they've also...
I have a question as far as the questioning procedure. Should we go through Sasha and then Sasha? Because we want the questions as part of the public work, and I believe, right?
Right.
Send them to Sasha and Sasha will floor them on?
Yeah, that would be the way to do it. Any other questions for Chuck? Well, it sounds good.
In general?
Yeah, looks like a real plus.
Do you want to know any questions about the applications we got?
Okay. Actually Travis has got a question. Travis, you have a question?
Yeah, well, not for Chuck, but just Public Comments.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank the Select Board, or whoever the parties to be are, for finally updating the V-Trans map on the town website. It actually is a brand-new version, 2022. And I'd just like to... Very much appreciated to finally see them updating that.
Yep, that would be good a week.
And honestly, thank you for pointing that out. I really did see that.
I've been trying to search out the map for over ten years.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Anything else?
There is, but it has to do with Tom Martin overseeing zoning administrator. And I brought some things to the current administration zoning administrator regarding a subdivision on Morgantown Mountain Road that was subdivided into four parcels of land that never ever went in front of the DRB. And that was a Kaminsky property. And when talking to the zoning administrator, Claire Rock, who was in this, she told me that Tom said not to look into it. And then there was another issue with George Wells's property upon Legal Trail 1. And he again never went in front of the DRB to get a zoning permit.
I'm going to address that one later on. Because I've been looking into that myself a bit with Denise. So I could talk about that a little bit further.
Yeah, definitely. And then also there's a new person looking to develop up in that Legal Trail 1, the end of Cobb Hill Road, and then turn to Legal Trail 1. And that person also, I should hope, would go in front of the DRB like the zoning regulations indicate. And also George Wells got another permit this year from Claire Rock out on another piece of parcel or the same piece of parcel. And again, even if it's a garage, which upon Jones Brook, there was a person there asked to build a garage at his camp. He went in front of the DRB. He did all the due diligence and got approved for it. And just want to make sure that the procedures are followed through zoning. And again, Tom told Claire Rock to not look into those issues. So that's a little concerning. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Travis. So you'll be around all meeting, right? Because we'll be talking about some of these things later. Good night Chuck. Thanks for coming. Stormwater project. So my understanding, Ray, is that there was going to be a site meeting on Wednesday? No, site meeting, he said he could do it on Thursday, on the 9th.
Oh, okay. I thought it was Wednesday.
No, Wednesday would have to be Zoom unless they change that.
I think you've got to change back to Wednesday. John, we can verify that in the morning to be sure. But I don't think Ray Deagle could make it on Thursday. So I think we've got to move back to Wednesday.
Okay.
But I mean, I have it written down as Wednesday.
Yeah, because I had, what I had was, I got the email from Cheryl Lynn. And it said that Andres could only do a site visit on the 9th. And if it had to be the 8th, then it would be a Zoom meeting. And then we'd have a site visit later in the summer.
So I think there was an update to that. Andre is going to send two of his associates to the meeting. Andre won't be here Wednesday. He's going to send his associates. And Ray Deagle will be here. So all the parties will be here on Wednesday. I get it at 1:00.
Okay, all right, that'd be good.
But so at that time, you know, we're going to discuss this project again. I think the question is, you know, on the agenda to hold off until 23 or not. You know, my feeling is it's June now. And we would want that park lot done by the time school starts. And I don't see that... If we put it out to bid this week, we still wouldn't have bids till the end of the month. We've got a contract signing. You've got six weeks of work. I don't think it's a good idea to try to get it done this year, even though we all would like to see it done.
Yeah, exactly.
But you know, I'm not the only voice here. But I think that's going to be my recommendation.
You've got to give the bids by the end of the week.
Yeah, and knowing what's... All the contractors are pretty busy right now. And the pricing is way up. I just think that if we put out a bid now, we'll probably reject the bids and put it out for bid anyway.
Right.
But we can... I don't know if you want to take a vote as a Select Board on what to do or wait till the meeting on Wednesday.
I think it's probably... Depends on the rest of the board.
Well, my only other comment would be more than happy to jump in and help at some point. But you know, develop a timeline so that if we are going to put it off to 2023, that on, you know, September, request for proposals will go out. And then, you know, the contractor has this many days to bid it. And then, you know, we can decide by town meeting or some schedule. So the contract is signed and ready to go come April or May.
Because I think the problem was, you know, we were on a timeline, a very detailed timeline, until Pam DeAndrea left CBRPC. And then things kind of fell apart. And Brian Boyd has taken over, so...
Yeah, I'm not saying that was any...
No, I know. You know, as Ray was saying, it's really too bad because this has been going on on all our projects. Quite a few years.
It's a problem every spring with the water behind the school. It's a problem with the fire block because it's not paid. But I just don't know what else we can do at this point.
Yeah.
Live with it another year.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? I guess we'll just verify that it would be a site meeting. But it sounds like it's going to be a site meeting anyways. That'll be good. Because I did email Brian too.
The guys from State would probably say the same thing.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on the stormwater project? And moving on, next up is Ira Hat.
Not good either.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a... A letter from Tom. Says it from the board about how my property had been taken away and given to someone else. And I wanted to know how that happened. And he sent me a thing here that says that they took the... They were given the deeds of the area. And it took one point. From that, they put the rest of them in place. I had been paying taxes on the same amount of property for almost 40 years, which it wasn't correct either. And I really would like to know if the listers... If they... How they find these spots where somebody comes to check on, right? I mean, they're not taking every map and every deed in the whole town and going through every one of them and deciding whether they're right on the acreage that the tax map sets. So I assume that there are concerns. There's either a survey, a piece of land bought or sold, or a conflict that would draw them to an area where they would then start looking at that stuff. And I'd like to know what drew them in there in the first place.
Well, again, it was CIA that did all the work.
Right, because listers are the ones. Now, the way it turned out, my neighbor was saying that my property was his. I was gone for 12 years from town here, taking care of my folks. And so I wasn't present. The land had been sold. I didn't even know who owned the land. But I knew that they were saying things because they'd said things to my neighbors and stuff that they owned my piece of land. I feel that somebody drew them into that area to do that. Now, at the same time, another neighbor of mine lost a piece of property also. This fellow that... My neighbor that was given that property had been saying that it was his property right along. I want to know... And he gained that. And they also... The others all only lost a quarter of an acre. But he only had acre and seven... Eight point seven. He lost a quarter acre. That little piece there, I don't know how that even falls into what they would be looking for. So I feel that the lister... Or listers, one of them did all this. I feel that he had, or she, had talked to Kim and brought what he had to say to the tax people. And now everybody said, no, that didn't happen. So I want to know how these things did happen. I mean, at first I wanted to sue the town, right? I mean, they made me do a survey. I was forced into that. And then I'm feeling as though I'm being forced to get a lawyer to bring against the town. I don't feel that I want to do that any longer. I just want to know the truth of how it came to be. When I was... I had the only meeting that I had to go to was one for a reappraisal, right? So I went to that. And I said, well, you're... I'm paying less than what I should. And that is a problem either way. It would seem to be, it would be to the town also. But...
Yeah.
Do you kind of get the drift of what I'm saying?
No, I do. Pretty much the letter that you got from the board pretty much spelled out what we know. So whether there was any conversation between the listers and CIA about...
On the letter, it says here, right? I mean, do you know what this letter says?
Yeah.
You do? Okay, good. I was hoping you'd... So essentially, it was not given to the next parcel over. He made an example out of 10 acres. And then said this. So essentially, it was not given to the next parcel over. And I had said that my land was given up. So it almost is like he's saying, well, that didn't happen. Well, that did happen. They did give the land to the neighbor. Kim was his name. And they gave him that acre. And it says here, so essentially, we didn't do that. I mean, so does that mean that he... What does that mean?
It was not given to the next parcel over. It was just simply missed due to lack of information being given.
Right.
So yeah, so...
But I don't know what that has to do with anything that I had asked. I asked how this could happen.
Right.
And maybe that was the wrong question.
Somebody wasn't doing their job. And all I can tell you is that I can't speak for what's happened in the past. But we've done away with listers.
Well, that made me feel real good because I had a bigger bid than I do now. And I'm getting over it. And I need to get over it because it's been bothering me for four years now. So... But I made this appointment. So I talked to Cheryl earlier. And I felt much better about the whole thing. But I did make the appointment. I wouldn't just leave you wondering what the hell I'm up to. Here I am. And that's the question that I have. I want to know really if the... And if the lister had talked to Kim and then brought what he said to the tax people. And like I said, I don't have any intentions of suing the town anymore. But I want to know the truth.
We don't know anymore than...
So we don't know the truth, any of us, right? And I don't know how to find it.
Right, right.
So I guess that's all.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to just leave you hanging.
All right, have you spoken with Don Butson?
I have not. But I'm probably going to make the call. Because I'd like to know. And like I said, it is a tool for me to go after the town. I mean, I live here. I'm going to make part of it back. So...
Okay.
I guess that's all. And I thank you for listening to me. And y'all have a good day.
Okay, thank you.
What was the sound?
5.
2017.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was a mess. Unbelievable mess. I mean, there were 200 acre parcels that got messed up. Well, hopefully we have a new zoning administrator. Karen? Have a seat. Good, how about you?
Good. Nice to meet you all.
Yeah, same here.
Hey, we should introduce ourselves.
Yeah, my name is Don Wechler.
Oh, yeah, yeah. John Hopeenwell.
Ray Washburn.
Paul Streeter.
And Tom Martin, the chair, is off. Well, he's come down with COVID.
And that's our fire chief.
And many other things. Many things off.
And I'm all control officer.
Oh, okay. Where are my hats?
Where's my hat?
Again, you're a good guy.
So we've seen your resume. Very impressive. And at this point, why don't you just tell us about yourself? Why you're interested and...
Sure, so I'm originally from Malone, New York, a few hours northwest of here, on the Canadian border. I moved to Vermont a little over 20 years ago. And I owned a home in St. Aldens. And then I moved to Burlington. And then six years ago, I moved to the Valley, lived in Waitsfield, and then moved to Facetown and owned a home there. My main background is scientific. I graduated with a biology degree, minor in ecology. Forgive me if I'm just repeating what's already on my resume. Did you see that? And I was in the laboratory field doing microbiological and chemical analysis for 12 years. And then I switched over to coffee. Kind of fell in love with the beverage. And started working in coffee labs. And did some time at Kierak Green Mountain. And then I'm currently working at a laboratory in Heinsburg called Coffee Enterprises, which I am planning to leave in a couple of weeks so that I can focus on my roasting business, which I started in 2017. I roast out of the... Convert the loft of my garage to a roasting facility. And I supply through Mountain and a couple of other places in the Valley. And I'm looking to spend more time on that. That's the intention of leaving my Heinsburg position. And I am still needing to have some additional income to support my household. So I'm not... I'm looking to go down from working two full-time jobs and still have a part-time job. So this is kind of the sweet spot for where I'm at in my life. And my two- to five-year plan is to open a brick-and-mortar, hopefully in this area. But for now, I am opening a mobile operation and hopefully being something in the industry there. So my relative... My experience that relates to this position is that I'm currently the chair of the Facetown Letting Commission. I've been attending meetings for five years shortly after I moved here. I just had an interest in participating mostly as civic duty. But also, I think it's really important if you have an opinion about something that you're informed before you form that opinion. And then I joined the planning commission as a formal member two and a half years ago. And I was just elected chair in March. So also relevant experience is that I have a lot of technical reading, writing, and editing experience, writing standard operating procedures in the lab hemisphere, conducting, and going through auditing at state level. And we have lots of technical experience. Drafting LUR language, that's what we're currently doing. We're just finishing in Facetown our LUR edits for this season. And hopefully putting those before the public in the next couple of months. So that's what's going on.
Okay, that's true.
So with all that, you feel like you can do like 10 hours a week? Or whatever it is for long term?
Well, I'll be leaving my full-time job in Heinsburg, so yeah.
No, as you said in the resume, it'd be perfect. It's a perfect opportunity.
Yeah, that would work for us and work for you. I mean, I also know that Facetown is looking for a zoning administrator.
They are, but they're looking for 35 hours a week.
Oh, they are.
And that is beyond what I can contribute.
I didn't know if they could, you know, do both.
That would be great if we... The town could find someone to do that. I think that it is an extreme challenge to find someone that could do that.
Yeah. I have degrees in biology and psychology.
Nice.
So you're hard.
Karen, one of the... Probably the major problem right now is, number one, our previous zoning administrator issued permits that did not comply with something. And so going forward, that's kind of stuff. We need to have some... We need to have this done by the book. And at this point, the building permit is only signed by the zoning administrator. There's no check by the Select Board on that. So I think I'm going to recommend to the board that at least for a while, that once you sign off before the permit is really issued, we need to have a Select Board member sign off as well to make it a valid permit.
That's reasonable.
Because it just slipping through the loops here. And you know, there's a lot of permits that are pretty straightforward. But... And you'll know, once you get into the zoning position, you can see where mistakes have been made. Some serious mistakes. That I don't know how we're going to fix yet. But we're going to fix them, I hope.
Happy to have them.
We need to get some checks and balances in there that...
Sounds like it.
Not... It's not that we're taking away anything from any new or anybody else. I think it's important that somebody look at this stuff before because a permit... We do the... For a curb cut, the Select Board signs off. Martin, the roadrunner, signs off. Everybody signs off. And for some reason, a building permit gets validated on just one person's signature.
And is that something you think you'll change in your procedures as well?
I think so.
In your procedures?
I think so, if there's a way to do it. Somehow we've got to, we've got to listen to them.
Especially in the Trail Class Four.
Trail Class Four roads are a huge issue.
Have you run into issues where permits were issued that should have gone through the DRB process?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. That's one of the big problems.
We've got a building permit that doesn't have an address on it that's signed on. You know, it just says Cobb Hill Road. And it's signed, you know? It just goes on and on. It's sad. It got down to this point. It's... It is what it is right now. But you know, so I didn't even know if that's a valid permit. And we could talk about this later. But I believe that that's not really a valid permit because it's not even in the owner's name. It's in the previous owner's name.
Was it the owner that had the sign? No, it's...
Yeah. So there's several issues here.
Well, just to address that, I am a huge proponent for the QC check. You know, having been in the lab field all my life, we always have that, checks and balances, everything. Someone does, another set of eyes has to review that before it goes out the door, before the report goes out the door, before a proposal goes out the door. So I think that's great. And I'm always happy to be that second set of eyes also. So I have no problem with someone reviewing my work. I welcome that, absolutely.
Hey, John?
Yeah, this is Dave Stapleton. How you doing? Hi Karen, good to see you again. So we talked to Karen last week. And I just want to make sure you realize she has some background in quality assurance and quality control. And so one thought I had was, if we do hire her, maybe we should have her help us come up with a quality control system for permits.
That would be fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, anything good. Anything is better than what we have right now. We need to, we need to go forward with some sort of quality.
Sure, it doesn't have to be elaborate. It can be pretty simple and straightforward. But I think you're right, just having that process in place is.
Karen, with all that said, I have a question for you.
Sure.
The argument, I did see first at the planning commission about WPO. And would you, would you be able for meetings, like when DRB has a meeting, the planning commission has a meeting, the select board has a meeting, planning meetings, to be able to come to those meetings if it has to do with zoning regulations, which planning commission is currently working on?
Yes, I, I, the only thing I think might be tricky is because I'm the chair of the planning commission of Facetown and I do hope to retain that position. That might be a bit of an issue with scheduling. So we meet every second Monday of the month. So I don't know if that conflicts with any of the schedules here, but otherwise, yes, absolutely happy. I'm kind of a meeting addict actually, so if it helps me do my job, then, then, yeah.
And we have an idea of what we would like to pay because we also realized that we were underpaying our previous zoning administrator. Did you have any thoughts on anything that you would have to receive or anything like that?
Well, the position I saw advertised on Front Porch Forum, I think it said thirty dollars an hour. Is that correct?
Well, we hadn't actually nailed it down.
That was a while ago.
Oh, yeah, that was a while ago. So, so.
Back in March, maybe.
So what we were thinking was, you know, somewhere between thirty and thirty-five. And so maybe if we started at thirty-three and then with a, with a idea that, you know, like come four to six months, we'd review and could, could bump it up to say thirty-five.
Okay. Sure, I, I do have some questions in my own.
Okay, sure.
So the other, so Sasha, you said this advertisement that I saw on Front Porch Forum was a little dated. Okay, so at that time, I think it was advertised as ten to twelve hours a week on average. And I thought, wow, for a zoning administrator position, that seems a little bit low, on the low end of hours. Do you think that ten to twelve hours a week average still makes sense?
I think initially it'll definitely be more than that and it'll drop off probably.
And it's, it's not, it's, it's really hard to put any time number on that because some weeks it could be twenty hours.
Sure, it's seasonal, so.
Other weeks, yeah, other weeks it'd be five or nine. So, yeah, that's why we set ten to twelve on the average.
Average, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's insightful that you provide a minimum as well, so. Okay, because I do have some limits on the time, as you know, I have a lot going on. So I'm just thinking like over twenty hours a week would be unmanageable for me. And if that's a conflict, then that would probably be a make or break for me.
Yeah.
Would they change yourselves?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that I have had a zoning person in here that's worked over twenty hours a week.
Okay, that's good to know.
Unless it was behind-the-scenes stuff.
Like email from someone or something like that. Awesome, yes, absolutely. Okay, and what is the expectation for time spent in the office versus remote work? Or is there?
What's the, what's the temporary, what were they doing? Who's like?
She was here at least.
Claire?
Claire, yep, like nine-thirty to, she'd stay and wrap things up by probably before one and then work remotely on Fridays. And if anything came in, I'd just scan it to her.
Okay, how many days a week?
She was just coming in on one day.
Oh, wow.
Physically here. But working remote on Fridays.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm hoping to, I'm going to reach out to Claire and JD tomorrow. I wanted to see how this went before chatting, hoping just to.
And Claire was very willing to help train some.
Well, I, that's great to know. That is really great to know. And she's good, so I had to work with her a little bit, plenty of times.
Okay.
Do you have some other questions?
Well, I think I was waiting to see if anyone else had questions too. Oh, is, is there a computer or phone supplied?
Computer on that back floor.
Okay. Desktop, no laptop?
Yes.
Okay.
No, just desktop.
Okay, is there any consideration for a laptop for remote work? Or what were people previously doing?
That's a big question.
That is, yeah.
I think that's something that we could certainly talk about.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Doesn't seem unreasonable. The way, the way things are now, so much work.
How old is that, that computer?
I think it might be one of the next ones to be. Talked to him.
Okay.
And then, do you have mostly electronic file organization here or things more manual?
Little bit.
Okay. Do you have a zoning software program that is used here? Or any way to track?
I think it's through Nemrick.
Nice, okay.
Right, David, Nemrick, right? Can you hear me? I don't think you can.
You might have put on a view.
No, he's, he's.
He looks frozen.
He's frozen.
Oh, there he is.
Wait, he's here.
You, you can hear us, David?
Oh, you're asking me, oh. Wow, I didn't know you were talking to me. So, no, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, I agree.
I just come out of you guys thinking about it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's him.
Sorry, I love it.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's, that's all the questions I have now.
Okay. Now, you said that you would want to talk with Claire and JD more before.
I would.
You would accept, okay. Fair enough.
But certainly by the end of the week, I mean, assuming, yeah, I'm sure I can get a hold of them pretty quickly. JB is really receptive. He was very excited that I was applying for this.
JB has worked well for us.
Yeah. Yeah, and he used to work as a DA for Facetown as well.
Yeah.
Well, since we don't need for the two weeks, it would be good if we could get this moving. So I'm going to make the motion that we offer the zoning administrator job to Karen Souder.
Souder.
Okay, effective, I believe it's July eleventh.
Is that a Monday?
It's a.
Is that, is that the?
That's the release date I could start.
Yes, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday, okay.
Yeah, it is a Monday.
And, yeah, so that's, that's the motion. And then you can just give us the answer se- second on that?
Second.
Any more discussion? At thirty-three dollars an hour with a review in six months, starting. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Everyone ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose? Okay, thank you, and we look forward to your response.
Well, thank you all very much.
So you're going to check with those, you know, chat with those guys?
Yeah, in the next couple of days and all you guys know by Friday. Sound good?
Good.
All right, have a nice rest of your evening, everyone.
Same to you. Thanks for coming in. Thank you, Chad. Where's your, where's your animal control officer, Karen?
You see, I left that one on one day. I was throwing a ball in the car and I must have missed one.
So what do you think?
So I.
My ordinance is pretty outdated.
It is. So I, what I did is I went on the LCTG's website, got, you know, their, their template version. Obviously made a few adjustments because they had some pretty outrageous numbers for, you know, for a second, their defense fines. And I brought those down a little bit, but still moving into the 21st century with the, with the fines. And what this new ordinance would effectively help us do as well is if we chose to go through the state, we could get ordinance ticket books and then actually properly ticket people and then the state of Vermont Judicial Bureau would take care of whether or not payment was received and further action if needed on that. And that was the, the big driving factor because we've had a few people that are, you know, multiple offenders. And I think that it's a, it's a good ordinance to, to adopt in town.
Stefan, is, is there any way, like a new resident comes to our town and they have a bad dog? Do you get any notice or is there any?
There isn't any program that I've, I've heard of for that. Which I'm sure that, you know, some places probably do have something like that, different counties in bigger states, but that's certainly something that would be good to know, but it's nothing that had been built up in Vermont at all.
So what would be the next procedure process? Looking for the select board to?
I'm looking for the select board to, you know, put their grace on. I believe that it has to go to a public hearing for an ordinance change and then you guys can, can vote on it. But I certainly, you know, I, I sent the draft out to you guys in case there was a change that you guys saw or thought needed to be made. But overall, you know, when I, I've referred it a couple of times and it seemed to make sense to me. I'm just hoping that you guys will do the next step and we can get a, you know, a public meeting for it and get the, the change to happen.
So we've got to figure out the ordinance procedure.
Yeah, I think they have to hold a.
It was a public hearing, yeah.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Can that just be at a select board meeting type of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as.
A part of it, a part of the separate meeting, yeah.
Okay.
And that was, that was basically it. I just wanted to get it, you know, moving forward so hopefully we'll have something to go off from. It's been quiet for a couple of weeks now, so we've only had one, one incident in the last two weeks, so we've, we've been good.
Well, that is good, yeah.
I'd like to go a month without anything, but I just don't see that.
And the, is it a lot of repetition, same dogs?
It'll be the same dogs often, but then you'll get an out-of-left-field one where somebody's, you know, dog just, you know, got out of their kennel or something on a fluke and, you know, went down the road. But a lot of it is a one singular repeat offender. I was doing a count, I've gotten one of the dogs eighteen times since I took over just over a year ago.
And how does the owner feel about that?
Doesn't, oh, I just looked away for a minute or, oh, somebody's opening my door when I'm not home or. There's, I've heard every excuse. I'm pretty sick of the excuses, to be honest.
Even with our current ordinance, so isn't there a penalty for repeat offenders?
There is. And so we were at almost a thousand dollars owed. Roy's Valley Animal Hospital didn't want to take those animals anymore because he's more of a place for animals that we don't know who the owner is. And I had no place to bring them, so I had to bring them back to the owner. And the owner never, never paid. And then Tom Genet, the consul and I, we, you know, tried working out a plan with him to build a kennel and get him under control and that seemed to work for a while. And then this spring it started back up again.
Is it one or two dogs?
It's two. It was three. He knew he couldn't take care of three, so he got rid of one. And so just two dogs, but they still get out often enough. But I know them by name and they know me by name. They bark at me every time and, you know, jump right in my truck. All money, every time, it never fails. So it's just, you know, I love dogs, but I don't love seeing the same dogs over and over again. I'm just hoping we can, we can get somewhere forward on it so that the fines are a little bit more real, if you know.
They're, they're, they're good dogs.
Oh, they're great, they're great dogs.
But it's just, sooner or later, sooner or later, one's going to get hit.
Absolutely. That's, I've picked them up a couple of times by people that have almost hit them in the road and stopped and grabbed them. But I feel like this is the, the next step forward.
Just get the ordinance and then ordinance change and then.
And then get to the state and get the, the ordinance ticket book. Because then once you issue an ordinance ticket, it goes just like if you would be to get a speeding ticket to the Judicial Bureau. And then, you know, they take care of making sure it gets paid. And if it doesn't, then they can, that's when things can start being, you know, levied or garnish wages or things like that. I think that'll, that'll help get it real to people who are going to repeat offend. I mean, that one time, that one person has a lost dog is, you know, it's kind of what it is. Things do happen. We've all, I feel like, had a dog get away and lost one for a short time. But it's the repeat offenders that I think are the big problems.
Yeah. So I would say, Sasha, just see if Tom has any input. But we should get on as soon as possible and have the hearing scheduled as soon as we can. Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stefan. So Dick is due at seven. And Martin's already here. So let's, let's just go on to reports and communications and then I'll go. As soon as Dick is here, we'll deal with that. So Ray, start with you.
Well, I wanted to put off the class four stuff. We'll talk about that in the O B business.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
So as you heard earlier, the RAP committee met last week and has recommended, is working on several things. But right now, they recommended to the select board that we go forward with the CB5 or fifty thousand dollars. The rest of the items are still being discussed and will be discussed probably for a while. One of the things that, that did add, and I was going to tell Martin that, you know, we talked about great, our updating, getting more gravel surfacing done. But we also talked about possibly getting some signs with the flashing indicator on it, the speed indicator on them. Maybe get some of those signs, which are not cheap, they're near five thousand dollars a piece as well. But, and maybe look at some of our guardrails and see if there's areas that we need guardrail that we can somehow get covered under the, the RAP money. But, yeah, those are some of the things. And, you know, we talked about the sewer, the municipal sewer. Right now, the committee is going to, the sewer committee is going to interview the two engineers, Otter Creek and Dubois and King, I think for last week of the month. And after that interview, they'll recommend to the board what engineer can go forward with on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's about it, the, the, the whole class. Yeah, that's about it, the, the, the whole class one thing, which is a whole, uh-
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else besides that?
That's it.
Okay. Callie?
Nothing.
Okay. Dot?
Um, no, I guess I'll just, I'll be in new business or old business with some stuff.
Okay. All right, and, um, the only thing I have is, um, I did get an email from Deborah Carroll, um, and regarding the, this new, uh, the new law, uh, 180, S-181. And, um, and the main, the main reason she was submitting that to me was because of the issues we have, the ticked down, and that he was gonna be discussing with us. And then also, um, what's also interesting there, um, that Tom and I are really excited about, is that it sounds like you can put traffic calming device, devices on our roads. So, that would, that would really be good too. And, uh, but we can talk more about that when we talk about, in old business, when we talk about, um, you know, the, the roads and the, uh, the sign posts that we've gotten and so on as well. And-
Speaking of-
Speaking of, and we'll go back since Dick is here now. Hello, Dick? And you're actually up because we're running a little bit early here.
See though-
Since Tom's back, we'll talk with you. So, how's it going?
I'm here.
Yeah, well, that's good. That's what I say too about me.
No, it's just like everybody else. It's been a boring three years.
Yeah.
At least we have a roof out there to walk on or places like that, so definitely exercise what that's about to do.
Yeah. All right, so, um, have an update for us on our neighbor here.
Yeah. Well, I'll give you the good news first. Frank is the property at the end of the street. Uh, he is not gonna rent it like, uh, the letter we sent him. Uh, he is planning to sell the property and not rent it. So, from that point of view, that may be out of our hair, although, um, I don't know if we can do something to put a stipulation in that the property can't be used as a rental property until the water issue is-
Right.
-determined. I mean, I think that would be the best way and the worst way.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's a longer story when we get to, uh, 1013, I would be. I'm assuming you've all had seen the letter that was sent out?
Yes.
And I can't see now. Basically, um, they did a lot of the simple things quickly, such as, uh, the, the storage system was corrected. A broken pipe was fixed and they de, uh, disinfected the, uh, the water of the cellar and everything. When I went there, the cellar stairs were so steep that I indicated that, uh, it should be off limits to, uh, the renters and, and basically they locked up that door. The fire extinguishers and the smoke alarms and everything were all updated, partly because of our order, the fact that the fire marshal did a inspection and is a little more enforcement minded. And so, all of those things were, were done immediately. The low water pressure seems to be solved. They have the, the water pressure now. And, um, apparently the gas lines were cleaned out and so everybody is getting more water. So, those are the things that they did. At the request of the fire marshal's office, the two, uh, units on the second floor, because the windows were so small or they didn't have access, they weren't allowed to use those rooms for, for bedrooms. The fire marshal also indicated that the stairs, uh, going up to the second floor were too steep and that they had to be replaced. What I'm hearing from Jason, who is, uh, who's Frank's, um, maintenance person, is that they plan to block those off completely and put up new stairways on the outside of that rebuilt building.
And is, is that okay with the fire marshal?
Because of the fire marshal, although it also complies with the health regulations because of the steepness in the stairs. Things that still have to be done. The, the, the place is just badly insulated, although when Frank redid it after the flood, I think he did, he did some fair insulation on the walls. But when I was there, all the baseboard in, in both of the units that I went through, you could feel the cold air coming through. So, um, I've requested that they do something as far as doing better insulation on the, uh, on the baseboards. In one unit, the pipes froze, uh, three times during the winter. And the other big thing is, uh, there's a leak coming from, uh, the second floor down to the first floor unit, uh, unit five to unit six, which is the bottom floor. You can see where the water has hit the tile and everything else. But, uh, but, uh, basically, uh, unit five just got vacated and the answer I got from, from Frank's person is, "Well, there's no leak now because, uh, because nobody's living there." You know, I still, he refuses to, uh, take down the tile to look to find out there's mold there as well as determine where the leak is coming from. So, that's one that, um, and I'm really concerned about. And, uh, so, and, and the other thing is, on a construction of these stairs, I keep asking for some type of schedule and I just get no answer, "We do it when we do it." It's about the best answer I can get. And, um, you know, we've asked for progress reports in the past and they never show up. There's a mouse problem also. We all have a mouse problem in our house right now, probably. But, uh, what's happened now is that, uh, because the, uh, unit five is, is not occupied, there's, uh, mouse droppings all over the place, uh, indicating that, you know, it's all through the building. I mean, it needs to do something about that, I, you know. Again, I don't think it's the biggest problem in the world, but it's just another one that kind of comes up with everything else in terms of lack of maintenance. There needs, on number six unit, the one down four, that needs to put, put a railing around the porch that's out there. The other thing is that, uh, my letter requested that they pick up the construction debris and all the other crap that's in there on the yard and that I couldn't see during the winter time because of the snow. It's, it's all over the place now. It does pose a risk to health and safety. The roof leaks. It's not big leaks, but, uh, you can see where, uh, there's, uh, some stain from leaks both in the hallway as well as in one of the units. And I also ask for tight fitting doors. Right now, the doors that are on the, at least the two units upstairs, it's just, it's just a regular old door from 1920 with a, with a latch, iron latch. There's no locks on the doors or anything else. And again, a lot of the, uh, wind coming in from the outside is coming through those doors. So, um, there, there are some issues with the tenants. The tenants have started a, probably a, an awfully legal escrow account, three to four of them have. And, uh, uh, I, I wish we had a social officer for the town so that we could have some discussion about some of those things too.
Yeah.
But we don't. I, I, I just don't know enough about some of the social aspects. I mean, uh, one person in there, uh, and I don't understand this arrangement, but I'm not a landlord. Frank has the master account for the gas from, uh, the propane that's delivered, but the individual tenants need to pay the individual bills. One woman couldn't pay her bill two and a half a few years ago and so they shut her off. She's been keeping her apartment with electric heaters. With, I'm sure she probably qualifies for some type of, uh, fuel assistance or something, but apparently she can't get her gas turbine back going. And again, I don't know enough about some of those issues. She, uh, just recently also, um, as she was going into her unit, her, her leg fell through the porch.
And what?
Her leg fell through the porch. They said put a boot over it. So, that's kind of where we are. Sasha has sent, uh, at my urging, a request for progress reports. We didn't get any, any, lied to us that he sent them, we didn't deal them. We all searched our, our junk files and everything else. About a month and a half ago, um, I met with Jason, his, uh, his man that takes care of the properties. And I said, "Look, um, since you're having so many problems with the tenants, I'd be happy to at least witness if you meet somebody there as you do a repair or you look at some of these issues." He said, "Yes," and I never heard that from him again. So, that, that's about where we are on this whole thing. I keep asking for some progress reports in writing. I did this past weekend when I met with Jason again. But I just don't get anything. I don't get anything with dates. That's the thing that worries me the most. Now, I, I've had a past life in enforcement. And, um, you know, the regulations and the laws are there to get compliance on enforcement. And so, you wanna try to do whatever you can to, uh, to, to get their compliance and it just doesn't seem like it's happening with Frank. Do you have any answer to any questions or?
Well, you start with the good news, that he was no longer gonna be renting. He wanted to sell it, but I mean, bottom line is, that place may not sell. Certainly, it'll take probably a long time to sell.
I, I mean-
And so, what do we do in the meantime? We've, we've gotta, we've gotta, he's gotta fix the problems.
Well, the, the, the big problem, among other things, but the, the huge problem is, is the, uh, is the water supply system. I mean, it's a, it's a spring fed system and, uh, it, you know, maybe somebody who was really careful and owned the property could run it. But, um, you know, I've had two tenants now that ended up where they ran out of water. And this was before we ended up with any drought conditions or anything else. So, I don't know what's happening over there at all. But that's the biggest problem, I think, over there. There's, there's, there's a bunch of other things. There's, there's bad insulation, uh, you know, they have, they have the, uh, sliding doors, which are just terrible. I mean, somebody is gonna take over that property if they bought it. It's gonna have to put in a lot of money to get it.
But they're not gonna rent it. He's not gonna rent it anymore, so we know what he said, so-
Well, yeah, they've just got existing tenants in there.
Oh, no, no, they, they moved out. They, he, he claimed that, he claimed that they were squashed. I didn't get into that, uh, but, uh-
It's making up-
With a court order, he got them out of there about a week ago. They've cleaned up the place-
Oh, okay.
And everything else. No, there's nobody did it yet now.
But he's not gonna rent it right now.
He's not gonna rent, that's-
That's what he's saying.
Well, and, and we sent him a letter that he-
He couldn't rent it.
Rent it unless he could show that he had a good water supply. So, um-
Okay, well, that's all.
Let me make sure I'm clear. The building that's being rented is the one almost across the road.
Yeah.
And the one at the end of the road is no longer being rented.
On current.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, yeah, well, that, that's-
Well, that's what Ray was asking.
No, he's, he's asking.
You know, Harvey's on this one, yeah, he's just getting, you know-
And, and the thing is, uh, the apartments across the road are, are fairly nice. You know, they did a lot of work after the flood and everything and they're fairly light and nice, but the problem is it just doesn't keep them up.
Well, then they're not nice, are they?
Well-
But, uh-
They have all kinds of small problems.
Yeah, it certainly sounds like it.
Lack of maintenance.
So, with the new, the new, isn't there a new law that we can, select, select board can take more action now?
Well, well, the select board, uh, acting as a board of health can take a lot of action. But I just, that's why I, I wanted to, uh, I, I wanted to keep the board informed and if we need to, I've talked to the lawn shems about, uh, about doing another health order and then, uh, going to the courts to try to get some enforcement. Mainly in terms of trying to get some dates in terms of when things are done. uh going to the courts to try to get some enforcement, mainly in terms of trying to get some dates in terms of when things have died. But um and and the other thing is, since he's in a contest with the um with the tenants there, he doesn't want to do, he he and Jason don't want to do anything. And so and the renters don't want to pay them unless they see the money going into some improvements in the house. And I again, I don't, you know, I'm not in the middle of that, but I mean, again, I can talk to Ron and try to come up with a a list of things that.
I didn't need to, but.
Yeah, I would I would definitely stand up. Everybody in agreement with that?
It's tough.
People need places to live.
Yeah, and I don't know, um you know, um he asked me where I kept my R factors though. I mean, maybe you should be doing a an empty water pump place. I mean, they're usually three people next to three. And and yeah, the legislature and their wisdom passed a bill that puts a lot of money to land lots of great apartments maybe. I I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I I just, as I said, I wish we had a social officer like the old days. So some of these other issues such as a woman that has to use space heaters to heat her apartment, uh you can try to find some relief. I'll put something together and talk to Ron about coming up with an order and try to get uh try to get dates on.
Yeah, I I let him know the the accuracy of this.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, it's time. Road Department update. Martin and brother Stephen.
Good evening. Nice job on the road today.
Thank you. A little dry, but uh so yeah, I've the biggest thing I'm here for is um just basically my overall budget is uh obviously set the budget in October, basically, to get ready for January first. Um so going off of those numbers, um you know, things have changed drastically, as I'm sure everybody's aware. Uh fuel costs being one of them, but culverts have doubled from last summer to this year. They've ju- I mean, literally have doubled in price, and that's across the board. It's not just one vendor. That's everybody.
How about availability? Have you had a hard time getting them done?
So uh so far, only placed one order, um and they had everything that was in stock.
Is that through Johnson or?
Uh yeah, it was through Johnson, yes, Johnson Hardware. Um and he said that his availability was good. They weren't seeing a shortage. I guess there is a shortage on some of the smaller pipe, the SDR thirty-five, but you know, the six, the four, six, twelve inch pipe.
Yes.
Shortages on that, but that's not something that we use a ton of, so I'm able to get the uh pipe, but it's obviously my budget's not going very far since it doubled. The sand, um where we get our sand from, Verens, they had a dollar fifty bump per yard across the board that she set in May, uh when we started for this year. So that that's a toll even on buying just the sand alone. That's a seventy-five hundred dollar hike in budget.
So what's that, what's happened to that now? Eleven or?
Uh they, yes, I think she's, I think it is a one eleven yard now.
So from the price that they give us?
Yes, from last year to this year, so.
Then they haven't, they have a five.
Yeah, I've set in my budget on last year's numbers, like in October.
Yeah, they gave us.
Everything was pretty still ordinary, nothing ridiculous, then kind of January, things started getting a little crazy and then um so she set her budget. I did reach out to her in the fall and she said at most she thought that she would go up at least fifty cents, but she wasn't sure.
Which is which is normal.
Yeah, which isn't a normal hike, but dollar fifty, uh we just uh got some material from uh the Russo, Old Russo's pit and they, the June first, they set new pricing on there that uh like you say, sixteen.
Sixteen forty.
Sixteen forty a yard. I want to say it was fourteen sixty. Yeah, about a dollar fifty jump.
So their gravel, their Verens gravel.
Also, a dollar fifty, I think that took fourteen now or thirteen.
So considering the the distance to Verens now, it's probably becoming more evident that they may be using plant mix or something closer.
You you, well, it's um it's still cheaper than the product that we may end up, but I fully expect that Northeast will also have a price hike here at some point, but uh Northeast, which isn't a very nice haul, a lot of granite cores, but they make up manufactured sand, which Berlin uses now. But the price difference was still um a big enough jump that we really couldn't afford to jump to that. But any more of the increase, then we definitely, I would definitely consider moving to a um product that I would much prefer on the roads anyways. It would be like a quarter to half inch um plant mix, basically, more on the roads instead of a round stone sand. It just ends up in the ditches and so um so just things like that. So we're probably going to, in an attempt to stay as close to budget as possible, we'll probably uh back off on some projects related to culverts, um stuff like that. We have a decent municipal roads general permit grant that we're doing on the mountain road. Um that will still take place, but will be reimbursed for a majority of that work that gets done. Another thing, uh mowing roadside, the rental mower went up fifteen hundred dollars for a week rental, which it was uh I didn't rent it. Um our old contractor, Alan on debt, they'd been doing the first pass. He canceled on us um late um this year, so I was kind of left scrambling to figure out what I was going to do. So the next logical thing was he either rent the boom mower for two weeks, which when I called, got ahold of them, that was out because that would throw my budget way off, you know, it'd be three thousand dollars more. Uh so I did call around to uh another um guy that mows for Berlin that could do it. The other option is Eric Howes is willing to purchase a mower um and do the mowing, and that would be the route that I would prefer to go. Obviously, you know, it does work for the town already. And I've spoken to him and he's ready to pull the trigger on renting or unbuying, not a boom mower, but a just a regular side mount mower to do the roadside, which we could get by with for a year. But we're going to have to come up with a strategy going forward. Fairfield's not even going to rent their boom mowers. They're getting out of it, so um part of the reason I didn't rent the boom mower from them is they said if they were able to sell the machine, that they would sell the machine and not honor the rental dates. So literally could be counting on getting a rental unit in July or August. They sell the machine and basically they're saying, you're you're not getting the machine. The only other place that I'm aware of that rents them is Pete's, and I called them and they're booked straight through to the fall.
So if Eric Howes gets a machine, uh the any idea what he charges by the hour? Would it be?
Correct, yes. Uh he said uh seventy-five an hour, which is um comparable to what Alan was charging us. I think he was sixty-five an hour, but that was last year's pricing before fuel went up. Um so I think it's a very fair price.
So.
And then we can just basically hire him till the money's gone in that budget and you know, you know. And then we have to come up with a plan, I guess, going forward.
Well, I think, you know, we should consider maybe a multi-year contract with him. It might work out better for him.
Right.
And for us.
Yeah.
At a fixed rate or something, you know. You probably have to put it out for
Bid.
And then just have a bid on it and see where it came out.
Yeah.
It seems like at this point, rug pull is not going to be an option going forward, so we need to we need to get a contractor on board that we can count on.
Exactly, and Alan.
Well, that would be for this year, though, if you're going for four.
Right.
Yes, right. We'll do it by the hour this year then.
Right, and then put it up a bit. I agree. I think that's the best route to take. The the only downside is we definitely need to either hire somebody with a boom mower going forward. I'm okay with it for a year, maybe two, but we definitely need a boom mower to be able to get behind the guardrails, get across that bank, um to keep the brush down, so.
Because sometimes it's not brush, all brush they cut.
No.
He did a mess on my property last year.
Yeah, Alan.
Yeah, my uh Willie Borahorns.
Yeah.
Took down some nice butternuts that were coming coming along.
Yeah.
I mean, I know they'll eventually die, but.
Right.
Yeah, but it would have been nice to know that he's planning on doing that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if I mean, I'll be honest, if it's in the ditch or in the ditch line, I'd prefer it be cut. I mean, from a road standpoint, maybe not from a tree standpoint, but from, you know.
Right, no, I understand. Yeah, I understand. But I I think that landowners should know.
Yeah, yeah, with that, yeah. I mean, anything that's in the right way, definitely, if you, you know, consider a prize or something that you you definitely want to reach out to us prior to, and maybe a public service mountain or get some ribbon on it or something, because it's a run mower, it's very difficult to tell what is what as you're running it.
Well, sometimes you don't know when they're coming too, so.
Correct, yeah, correct.
It'd have to be maybe some way a lot of people know.
Yep.
It's I sometimes think this, you know, when they they go up like that.
Yes.
And get up higher and then take some branches off some trees that might not really need to go or something.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, I've done exactly what you're saying, and it's not pretty. It's um but I can tell you it's a lot um more time effective than a chainsaw and a pole saw.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, right.
It's definitely not pretty. I realize that.
Yeah, why the machine?
Right.
I have my employee put in on this this subject. Um with all invasive species that we're getting, you know, the the Japanese knotweed, the poison parsnip, it might not be a bad idea to consider buying a roadside mower, because then we can hit it more than that that once a year to keep those invasives down. It's a big investment for the town. I know it's a new piece of equipment, you know, it's generally a one purpose piece of equipment. But it would help to keep those invasives down.
Yeah.
It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like a price that that might help, so. A lot of towns have gone that route, um and I'm definitely not opposed to it. Um it would be great to have that piece of equipment, um more or less to use when you want it, when you have the time to use it. You know, you've got poison parsnip, um Howes rode up there, you could knock that down before it bloomed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's unbelievable. It spread just in the last two years.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah.
Uh Japanese knotweed, obviously, you can mow it and you can watch that grow, basically. So I'm definitely not opposed to it. I just, it's it's tough. It depends on what you can get per year for um contractors.
Right.
If you have any signs, you know, so.
True.
No, we should definitely keep that in mind for the future anyway. But everybody okay with us doing it this year?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a over budget. I'm I'm sure that uh we can come up with something, we have money to cover those over not over budget items.
Yeah, I mean.
There's no way we could anticipate it, you know.
The kind of increases that we're seeing, you know.
Fifty percent increase in fuel and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, we're already in basically um scrounglowing, you know, just trying to do what will have to be done.
And I and I would encourage you to do what has to be done and not put off anything because of money, because we'll find the money. You know, I'm a true believer that if we put it off, it's not going to get any better. It's going to be twice as worse next year.
If it needs to be done and we see it, it will it will have to get done, because it, as we all know, after the fact, it's a lot more expensive than fixing it beforehand. Just it's, yeah, it's just been.
What's a what's the status as far as the the river road by scripters? Do we, do we have a grant on that?
Uh I don't know if we've actually received a grant yet.
Okay.
So we're waiting on that, but I have um started pulling the trigger on getting updated pricing on that as well, because the pricing that I had to apply for the grant was la- was
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, I think, twenty twenty-one. So I fully expected those pricing, that pricing to be through the roof, and surprisingly, what I'm seeing right now, it's not that big of a jump, like twenty grand.
Yeah, so about fifteen to twenty percent increase?
Yeah, probably right around there.
Hopefully, hell of a statement come through.
Hopefully, we get the grant and then we can just pull the trigger on. Like I said, I've gotten some basically budgetary pricing just to find out where we're going to be um for that, but um I don't know, just give a couple, you know, free companies to bid and.
Yeah, I think probably.
Yeah, that there will. So far, Pike has said they can do it and um Topcoat?
Fresh Coat.
Fresh Coat um reached out to me looking for work and I had them look at it and they got back with it. Brakes too, sorry. So hopefully, uh that product.
Just uh who's doing the work on Route Two? Is that Hutchins going to be paving there? I guess wondering if they're going to be in the area.
Yeah, I don't know who that.
I think Hutchins has got that contract for doing Route Two, and it might might work out, uh reach out to them and see if they're going to be in the area.
Right.
Perhaps they can give us some sort of deal.
Yeah, so yeah, so um I will mention, so Eugene Grantfield, who we awarded the sand bid to, um has come down and said that he needs more money to complete that contract, and I told him that I would bring it up to Slickwood, but at this point, I think if he's asking for a dollar or more per yard and that definitely outside the realm of what I'm willing to to work with, um he hasn't stopped hauling, so uh at this point, I think we just let him either haul it for what he agreed to or or cease hauling. It would be my, I think, the best way to handle it. I mean, we get anything over six, six and a quarter, we probably haul it ourselves.
Yeah, that's sounds like a plan.
Okay, I just, I told him I would run it by the board, but I'm not in agreement with it.
Everybody, I don't care. That he won't haul it anymore?
If that's what he chooses to do, if he doesn't get any more money, but he agree, you know.
He won't choose.
Yeah, he signed the contract, and if he doesn't want to finish it, then that's up to him, but because and then just went back to the budget. Usually, the gravel budget is where I can, you know, save from if I need to make up on overages on other places. Usually, the gravel budget is where I can, you know, save from if I need to make up on overages on other places. And of course, after the mud season we had, you know, we spent some money on, on treating mud, so.
Yeah.
That money may not be there to, you know, kind of steep that rob from. And I think that's the only.
So, Martin, do you think number-wise, are you ten percent over budget or any idea at this point?
I worked with Sasha and she sent me an updated budget report in maybe three weeks ago, and it's, yeah, probably ten percent. I can get the latest round of slips and stuff, that's, you know.
Not be big, you know, so, you know.
That colored order, that's a big chunk.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Right. So like I said, just with her dollar fifty bump, we're going to be seventy-five hundred dollars on the sand alone will be over budget just from last year. I, I did bump it three thousand more, so that will be forty-five hundred dollars, but then we paying, we're paying more for trucking. Seven, basically seventy-five cents more a yard for, for trucking, so we're back to, we'll, we'll be over anyways, we look at it. And I'm not, not willing to not put up, you know, five thousand yards, because we just seem to blow through it with the rain events we get in winter.
We've tried that before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Paying the price for it.
Yeah, we definitely pay in the spring. What other thing I had was the shop, I was walking around the shop the other day, and the trim boards on the back peak have come off, there's two trim boards, and it's going to be an extremely tall ladder to get to it. I don't know if we have a contractor that we use for that sort of thing, or. This is in the back, in the back peak.
Can you get to it with a high lift?
Nope.
Must be a ladder.
I'm not saying that it could, that we couldn't repair it, but we'd obviously have to rent a ladder and figure out how we get the ladder.
How big a ladder you use?
It'd have to be at least a forty footer. We have, we have a thirty-five footer at the fire department. I don't think it would reach comfortably that high.
I have a forty.
You do?
Yeah.
We could try that.
Yeah, yeah, try that, because I can't, I can't handle myself.
Yeah, no.
You won't find me a thirty-four.
Yeah. I'll get Sean to do it.
Good luck.
Yeah, I don't know what the smallest contractors are. You can find somebody local.
Right, okay.
So we'll look and see if we can figure out what the, what the extent is.
Well, maybe we can find a contractor and supply the ladder.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something that Joe Gabory does or not.
Right, I could ask him, I see him, but he's not, yeah, I'm not sure, he's not going all the way.
He might have a person.
Or.
Yeah, I probably, yeah.
And then, we still have the compensation thing to work on, but.
Yeah.
To try to, I know, but just to get, we took a knockdown in trying to get the right person, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I think we might have just go and, it kind of jogged my mind about Hurd Road, the cedar hedges. They are on Hurd Road or out of control again, so we need to address those. I'm sure if I go in and start hacking, it's going to be an ordeal, so maybe we can reach out to Frank first and let him know we need to be trimmed back more than willing to do it, we just need to know it's not going to be a fiasco.
Everything is, you want to cut us in the right of way?
It is.
Oh, yeah. All edges, so.
Yeah, the whole hatch is in the right of way.
Is that where the tree warden finds him?
Actually, Eric is the ultimate.
I'm not sure. I think he'd probably tell us if it comes out of the way.
Yeah, I know.
Good.
It is even a safety issue, like even.
No, I know.
Even a car trying to get out there is, is so mad.
There was not much trimming done last time either. I mean, not enough.
No, not even. And we just cut some and we thought it would be better, but it's, I mean, cedars grow super fast anyways. Especially when you prune, you trim, they grow really fast, so.
I suppose I can get.
Reach out.
Reach out to.
And the only other biggest one I have is applies for road, you know, issues that we.
Right.
Right.
I guess, yeah, you might as well talk about that now, so under whole business. Denise, that's what you're waiting for too?
Yes, that, yeah, I just want to see what's happening with that. Thanks.
I just had one more question, Martin. We had talked last year about some sort of compactor to use after grading.
Yes.
Yeah, we could talk, yeah, we could talk with the grader.
Yep.
Where do we stand on that?
Uh, we were going to attempt to build our own drum roller, like a lot of towns use. But I think the, I think we, DBU or some on the board was like, well, maybe we should hold out for a walk and roll, which are the pneumatic tires, which get into every crumb, but they're extremely expensive. I think we could be into a drum roller for, well, old pricing, under ten thousand. New pricing, I guess I'd have to reprice it, to see, but we have some really talented.
I still think it's a, I think it's a really good idea.
It, it is. Uh, that, yeah, that one, I did write it down too, but I skipped right over it. So, um, oh, on five twenty-four, we all, um, took part in a grader class. If you, Stu Johnson, who went all over the roads, came to help with the shop and went over some things with us in a classroom setting, and then we all went to the River Road and took turns grading a section of road while he followed us and gave us feedback on that. It was really informative. It was definitely a great, you know, you know, instruction. And all four of us were, you know, took a section of road and did our own section of road.
Mine fell off the basket, if anybody misses that.
No, I thought it was good.
It did happen to be the flattest, I will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, one, one other quick thing. Butternut Hill sign, is that going to be a new one?
I have it.
Oh, you do have it? Okay.
Yeah, I believe it's in the shop. I actually had the shop.
I believe it is.
Ruth was willing to make one.
Yeah.
Well, let me check with you guys.
Yeah.
That actually brings up a, an interesting road department E nine one one question. Um, as new roads are, are going up, and obviously the town is getting a sign and getting a sign post, and traditionally we've had, you know, what is it, seventy-five dollars or something that the, the people that are, you know, proposing the road pay. The prices of, of that stuff has gone up, you know, crazy as well, so we'll have to revisit that as we, you know, get new roads. Because I just issued a new road that was approved prior to me, that's going to end up needing a sign, and I don't know where the money's coming from or if we've even received any, I don't think we have.
Yeah, definitely may want to find a new fee schedule for the signage portion of that, just simply because it's typically right around a hundred and fifty here at your sign with, with the insert proposed and the bracket, the whole sign and the sign.
Yeah.
It's right around a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, all right. And they took that little sign north of, which is okay, because a lot of times it says north of, people wouldn't see that at all, and they'd end up at my house.
Yeah, I was going to say hi. That was lost while I think I replaced six lines since I.
That's, that is really ridiculous, yeah.
Just people always stay still, it's a very unique name, so.
We considered just putting a bunch of them down below, so at least they don't take the hose and mess them up. Maybe a bunch of free sign from the bottom of it.
Maybe we should change the name of the road.
All right, class four road.
Okay, so, uh, class four roads and trails, I guess you'd want.
And trails, yeah.
So, uh, I did spend some time the last week or so, and I actually met with Denise last Friday to review what I found out, and basically, we have issued, like I said earlier, we have issued permits that should have been, should, building permits that should have gone through the DRB did not go that way. And part of the DRB review, which was important, is the access to their property. Clearly states that we're supposed to have twenty-foot roofs, the town plans gives a specific criteria, it's supposed to be met. And so, right now, like I said, we have a building permit for Mike McCartney, Mike McCartney, for a house on Cobb Hill. But the house was built by George Wells, and George Wells got a garage permit for that house. But again, these were both approved by the zoning administrator, when it's clear that any development, no development, only development is permitted on lots that don't have class one, two, or three access without DRB review, so. It, it's my feeling that, um, the select board should contact Mr. Wells and tell him he has to get the right permit, the right building permit, which means going through the DRB. That's what needs to be done. If that's legal, I, I think that's what we got to do. Send him a letter, see if he's willing to reapply and comply with the zoning regulations as they are now, and see how that goes. I think that's a start.
Yeah, okay.
And as I said earlier, the whole building permit process, it's all in the zoning administrator's signature, and they need to have some sort of review, I believe, to make this right, so we don't run into this problem again. Cobb Hill is not the only road. Brownsville Road, it's going to be the same issue. You'd have people up there that, that want to build. That road is probably worse than Cobb Hill. There are places up there, the culverts ready to jump out of the ground. It's very narrow. If we ever had to get a, a, a emergency vehicle up there, there's no way at this point in the winter time. Alan, you know what you can do in the summer time.
I, yes, it could get there. Yes, it would do the job. I wouldn't like any bit of that.
Yeah, yeah, so, again, these are, these are two of the many, probably many issues that we have, but these are two are really coming up that we really need to look at and be careful where, what we issue for permits.
Well, you have the same on Lynch Hill too.
In Lynch Hill?
There's a camp up there. It's right in the middle of the chute. The chute is an ice skate in the winter.
Yeah.
But there's a camp up there.
Yeah.
That is planning to be lived in year round with no power, no water.
So, yeah, Lynch Hill is another one. So these are all roads that are, we just need to be, pay a lot of attention to how we're issuing permits and curb cuts.
Yeah.
I mean, going this far and saying, when we issue a curb cut, we ought to issue a separate sheet, conditions sheet on curb cuts in these class four roads or trails, specifically addressing what is required. So they know, even if they're not going to build anything right now, they know that they have to fix this road, that the town is not going to fix these roads.
Well, even fixing the road is sort of not okay according to the town plan. They said like trails, they want to keep them trails. They don't want to upgrade them. You could, but it's a process to do it.
Right.
And it's an expense to our town and more burden on Martin here to be able to maintain if that became a class three road. Also, uh, these, uh, legal trails are, it's issues all over the town. So it's not just the ones we're currently working.
Yes, I, I agree. I think now that we have the new map, we can, you know, we now know the right road names and hopefully.
Well, I, I think going forward for the select board, we had this issue last time Tom Martin was here for a select board meeting that they were issuing a permit on Cobb Hill. You know, you should, you should be aware of your roads and your trails and your class four roads, because when you look at a E nine one one curb cut address, it basically tells you the mileage of how far up that, that distance is. And we ran into this issue and it was way down in Cobb Hill that needed a curb cut, and that's well within the reason of the class three road. So, I mean, you should know how long your class three roads are and so on.
So regarding the two permits that were issued, do we need to, I mean, is it something that we have to get legal advice on? Whether that we can send us a letter to the guy we're basically evoking it?
I, I think we should write a letter to the owner stating that the permit they have is, is not valid and, and see how they, they may say, okay, we'll just get another permit.
Yeah.
Or they may fight it. I don't know.
The hard thing is, is I know one of those buildings is complete now.
Right. It's not like, I'm sure that a permit will be issued, but they need, they, even if they have the wrong permit, there's still regulations here that have to be followed. It's just like a speed limit sign. You know, you just can't go fifty miles an hour because, well, they said I could drive on this road. You know, uh, this, it says, it's pretty clear in our zoning, you have to comply with this stuff.
Right.
So I think, you know, I think we have to write a letter to Mr. Wells.
Well, the other thing is, I was never notified of the permit for the garage. Sorry, this is Denise McCartney. I live on Cobb Hill. I was notified of the first building. But I was, I was never notified in writing for the second permit, which I'm assuming is separate and not the same. And if I'm wrong, somebody please correct me, but.
No, there's two, there's two permits, one for the garage and one for the house.
Garage was just issued in March, is that correct?
Yeah, March ninth. That's correct.
Okay, well, so the, um, the second permit, the one issued in March, I don't believe the zoning administrator or whoever, nobody notified any of the, um, surrounding neighbors, like the land, the adjoining landowners, including myself, of that second permit. There's, and so I was not notified of that. I saw a sign that there was, you know, that a permit had been issued or something, but I didn't know. And then I asked George and he said he was putting a driveway in. And then as time went on, I was like, what are you exactly doing? That's more than a driveway. So, um, I don't think that the process was filed, followed for the second permit. It was followed.
I, I agree. I, I don't think the process was followed for either, either permit. So.
Well, um, I'm sure it wasn't, but the second permit definitely wasn't followed, and that was under a different zoning administrator. So whoever has oversight to her work, you know, where is that oversight?
Thank you.
That was issued by Fair Rock.
Okay, well, as far as notification to landowners by the person putting the permit in, and if the March permit was put in by George, the landowner, but didn't cite an actual location, that seems like it's also incomplete. So why wasn't that caught and questioned?
Well, the garage permit has the physical location 911 address on it.
Yeah, we just have the proper, the windulation of number of roadway or legal trail.
It only, it does not state anything as far as access.
But usually it says off Cobb Hill Legal Trail or Cobb Hill Number 6.
So according to the Vermont E-911 board?
Well, that's different.
Right, but that's what the number was generated from.
Yeah, but E-911 is not the official map, period.
Right. It's just a number that, that everybody has chosen to go off.
It does say 1760 Cobb Hill Road on the garage permit.
Yep.
It does not say.
Number of.
Number on the building permit.
But on the wastewater permit, if, that's if Vermont got it correctly and one of those permits does say 6. Says Town Highway Number 6.
Okay, I don't have the wastewater permit.
The wastewater permit does have the right delineation of legal trail number 1. But all point aside.
I think we all recognize that things have gone wrong. And, and we're, we're gonna correct them, you know? I mean, there, there are several things. And I, and I know Denise that, that we're very concerned about everything. And like I said, I, we will get to the bottom of this and do our best to make it not happen again.
Well, it's going to happen again. Because now they wanna build off Kaminsky's property up on top of Moretown Mountain Road. There, it's been divided up four times. And that's Legal Trail 11. And I met Martin up there not too long ago. And, you know, you don't know where that legal trail is. It goes smack dab through the field, right over the top of a 4,000-foot well drilled right over the top of the legal trail. And horizontal, a quarter mile that well goes. The well heads right flush with the ground. Where's the health inspector on that? It's flowing right out on the ground. It's gonna, you know, that's, that's a health issue. It's this big around. It's almost 24 inches round. You know, and that's right smack dab. That's everybody's well. That's right smack dab in the middle of Legal Trail 11. And that just got divided up. And those people plan on building up there. And how they're gonna access their road, they may have a different legal right-of-way, but legal trail is what they may presume to go off it. So these issues were brought up back in October 4th, back in 2021, by our old zoning administrator. And he went into great detail about these issues. So this has been on the docket for quite some time, I believe. And I'm right with you, Ray. Hit the nail right on the head. Hopefully, we, you do what you say you're gonna do.
So, I guess, I can work with Sashow on the letter. And trying to get something.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know, he can draft a letter. I can send over something within a couple days of what I think. And then, you know, everybody else can take a look at it.
And then on another note, the Planning Board's working on creating some, a document that we can address how people are gonna proceed building on a trail.
Do you have work on that?
Well, I thought we discussed that at one of our meetings.
Yeah, we're, we're sitting in all meetings. They haven't, they're not currently working on it.
Oh, we talked about, okay, I'll, I'll correct myself. We had talked about it that needs to be addressed, that we make the changes in our zoning documents to reflect the pressures that we're now starting to see on building on these roads. That we, you know, come up with clearer language on what people can do and how they need to do it. Just living on these roads.
Now, he, he, I know you don't wanna hear this Travis, but we may, we may have to have a committee.
Well, that's what I was gonna bring up. And they were actually saying, they're actually saying that Ray was gonna be head of the committee.
Yeah.
So, because in, in working together on that.
Right, right. So we have the new zoning administrator, the Planning Commission, Select Board members. But, you know, what it has to do is a focused committee working on these things. Because that's one of the problems whenever there's something joint with the Planning Commission is the two boards just aren't gonna be able to meet all of that. And of course, of course, Martin and somebody from, somebody else if you want.
Well, that brings up another issue. According to statutes, Martin has authority on town highways. And the statute, I can't read off the top of my head here right now, but the statute basically says he has authority over town highways. And a legal trail is not a town highway. So, I mean, just to look into that maybe further. But basically, I know there's gonna be a committee. I was at the Planning Commission last Wednesday and they mentioned such a thing. And they suggested that Ray may be the chair or somebody on it. But we've also had these committees before. And we also had a meeting that no minutes were ever posted or ever taken back in 2016, 2017. And there was a lot of people. It was in the town clerk's office down here. There was Reed Coral was involved then and a bunch of other people.
Well, it's gotta be longer than that, because.
It was in 2015-ish.
The town, that's been gone since the 5th.
No, the, the town.
Oh, Hall.
Hall.
Oh, the town.
We had that place packed full of people that lived on legal trails and Class 4 roads. No minutes are ever posted on that. And then we also had a financial committee meeting afterwards, which.
I, I'm unaware of those. We've cleaned that up.
Well, the point is, we had that, we had that meeting and this was back when we, we already had a legal trail, Class 4 road committee, which is still on the website. And we had meetings and they're, they're not posted, you know, regarding these issues.
Denise, did you wanna say something?
Uh, just, I just wanted to add that if there is going to be a road committee, um, I hope that the purpose of it is very clearly defined what the role of the committee is. And that that is communicated to the public because it doesn't make any sense to form a different committee with not, you know, and not have a clear and concise purpose and, and mission for it.
Understand.
So I just wanted to add that. That's all.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Thanks Denise.
With, with that said, I just have one more thing. And I brought this up a few meetings ago with John. Is we have a policy that's the Select Board is supposed to abide by on these Class 4 legal trails. And it's basically the state statute. And it's kinda just gone in the wind. I mean, it is your responsibility as a Select Board for these issues to know where these legal trails are, to know where these Class 4 roads are, and any issues that become on those town highways. It is strictly the Select Board's responsibility. So even if we have this committee, it's still the Select Board's responsibility.
You're right.
It's not the committee's responsibility.
Committee makes recommendations.
Yeah, it's just an advisory committee.
Yeah, advisory committee is a good word. All right, so, we can certainly, I guess I don't mind being on some sort of committee or advisory committee. Let me figure out a schedule here and, you know, I'm, I'm sure we can figure out who's gonna be on it.
Okay.
Travis, you already volunteered, right?
Well, it sounds like you're already there, so I'm pretty close to it, yeah. I guess I have. I made it this far in all this BS, so I'll keep going.
And I should think Denise, you might wanna be on too?
Sure.
Any thoughts, Martin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty torn on the whole thing. It's, it's pretty messy. I mean, even our Class 4 road policy right now with the AAB is pretty convoluted and.
It is messy.
It is.
It's very messy. I know surrounding towns, most of them do nothing with Class 4s. Then there's statutes saying that, you know, you're responsible for, you know, waterways and blah, blah, blah. So, it's a double-edged sword. I know right now, Brownsville, we've got a culvert that there's water running right down the middle of the road. The last I'd heard, the board had agreed that they wanted us to reset, basically it's sitting on top of the ground and it got pushed up like a lot of culverts did this year with the froth. And last I knew, the board wanted me to reset that culvert and put one load of gravel over the top of it. And, and that was it.
Yeah, I think that's agreeable because I think we have a responsibility as far as, some responsibility as far as maintaining a drainage to a certain point.
A connecting stream.
Yeah, waterways and stuff. So, I don't, I don't know why the, I don't know how or why surrounding towns get away with doing, apparently next, I've had numerous discussions with other road crew in Fort Worth and they just basically wash their hands of their legal trails and Class 4s and.
Well, that's what we're probably supposed to be doing, but our town has allowed these individuals to build houses out in the middle of nowhere, which I don't even know how they get there. I really don't. It was all I could do to get up Jacobs Road or what do you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a. Rousville Road. So, I mean, and my truck, I mean, I was gonna bottom out every culvert I went over. So, if a fire truck may end up there, good luck.
We all know, you know, when season hits and then it's, you know, the residents are like, oh, you know, emergency vehicles can't make it. It's like, well, you know, they issued with Class 3 roads that they might not have made it. So, you're not, you know, then they immediately turn to, you know, the road crew to come and fix their problems and it's.
Well, that's where it becomes a burden. And that's my biggest complaint with these Class 4 and legal trails is it puts a burden on Martin. I mean, it puts a burden on the taxpayer. And that's why it's in the town plan not to upgrade these roads because it becomes a very highly big expense. Now we're not gonna do culverts. I got a culvert below my house. It's not even on the culvert survey. Why? You know, I just met with Allison Andrews, which I know she just met with, with Martin on that issue, on something to do around that issue. And that culvert's been there for 40 years. How come that's not on the culvert survey? And it's a connecting stream right across the brook. Culverts like that need to be replaced, not Class 4 road culverts.
Right.
So that's, I'm the advisory committee to help work on these things to get it clearer to people that they can't be on these roads. If you wanna live out on these roads, this is what you're responsible for. Maybe we just haven't made that clear enough.
Well, just add to that, that, and that's great. So now you're gonna mandate that they're responsible for updating, keeping the road up to snuff. So that requires a working right-of-way permit. Which then, how do you tell somebody that just spent $150,000 on a chunk of land that they're gonna put another $80,000 into a road to get to it that may or may not be on an actual legal trail? Because we have no idea whether the legal trail is where it is. It looks like it may be the path, but.
I have a legal trail 17. You have it coming way down below my house in all the maps.
And something has to be done before they buy the land. Yeah, I mean, as a, as a buyer, they have a responsibility looking to what they're buying, I would think.
And the seller, too.
Our seller, yeah.
Yeah, but the other thing is too, and I brought this up in the past, financial institutions on Denise McCartney's house. She has a loan out from Northfield Savings Bank. She may or may not have paid off. Northfield Savings Bank, you know, that puts a financial institution at risk. And our town's helping this stuff happen by allowing the people to live out in these middle-of-nowhere places. They can live out there, they can have insurance on their house, they can have a loan, but they might need a special renter for those houses to be able to provide the insurance needed for the loan.
Well, they don't provide the loan.
Yeah.
Well, they have home loans.
No, I know. That's where the bank shouldn't provide the loan based on.
The address from the bank, it should be normal address.
Yeah, I think with the E-911, it makes it look normal, but it's not.
I think we're going down a rabbit hole that we don't need to go down at the moment, you know?
Thank you.
Okay, so Ray will take charge of that and see if. Yeah, we'll see if, if Tom wants to be on it or otherwise I, I guess I can.
I can.
Or you can.
He will work on the trails early.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, before we leave Travis, I should get your phone and some contact info. I have Denise's info. Okay.
Good, that sounds good.
Yep, and there, and.
And Martin, your input is really important, too, so.
That's what I would like to be a part of it in some fashion. All right?
Okay.
Have a good one. Thank you, Stefan.
Thanks guys.
Thank you, Stefan.
Thanks guys.
Yep. Thank you, Denise.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay, that's everything that you had on that.
That's enough, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, one other note, I, you know, I haven't done anything. You know, we've talked about the, the other two trails that we want surveyed. I have not done anything because this is really, I've been focusing on this and, and we were waiting for a map, which we now have.
Yeah.
So. It's coming, it's coming around.
Okay, no, that's.
Did we realize that we don't have enough money for these surveys?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that too.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, that, that's gonna be the.
Yeah, we may not be able to do one this year. We may have to get a estimate and add more money in next year for one survey. I, I don't know.
I don't know, yeah.
You're currently have a survey out right now still, though, right?
We've only asked for pricing, we don't have any contract that I know of.
Oh, the fascinating is they said it's already moving forward. You needed some certain apps on order by yearway, you know, I don't know, the legal, the legal trail or.
I have not signed any contract with anybody.
I think we discovered one of our meetings that we budgeted like $5,000.
We budgeted.
That's not even gonna pay for the guy to drive there.
We budgeted, we got hourly rates from Vermont Survey.
Yeah.
But I have not reached out to them to go look at any, any road or do any work.
That's not what was portrayed on the meeting, so that's why I was questioning.
Okay.
Because they said the name of the surveyor, they don't have it from you.
Vermont Survey.
What's his name?
That's Claude Falter?
No, that's a.
Steven, uh.
Stephen Fraser.
Stephen Fraser.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So. What I wanted, you know, I have, it's been a long time since I've been up there and looked at the one from Moore Brook. Again, that's one where we have, we're giving, are supplying six yards of stone every year because the area question goes through the dues property.
Right.
So six yards of stone is, you know, 500 bucks or whatever. You know, is that worth a $10,000 survey to fight about? I think just say, okay, we're just gonna do this. Everybody's happy with it, whether it's on the right location or not. I don't know. But that, it may, it may be, that's an answer. I'm not saying that's the right answer. But, you know, the right answer is, yeah, let's get everything located.
Yeah.
But, you know, we don't have enough money.
Are there any on that particular one with some concrete blocks blocking the way?
Yep, there are concrete blocks up there that are blocking.
And I think that's a big issue. We should remove.
I thought that the blocks were removed.
They were up there this spring.
I've been through there and.
There was two separate people said that they were up there.
They weren't there. I don't, I don't think they were earlier, but I, I thought Jeff said they removed them.
Nope.
Okay, so that's why I need to look. Obviously.
Unless there's a Select Board that'll be blocking, you know, which you could do.
Cause I know Avery told me it was blocked. And then I asked Jeff, is the road blocked? And he said, no, he took it off.
They, um, I heard from two separate people that it was blocked.
Okay.
This spring. March, April. So it is blocked.
Still blocked. March, April. Still blocked. March, April. Okay, Ray.
All right. Other old business. Tom?
Well, I don't know.
Want to talk about?
What?
Got a couple of things to talk about.
Well, I mean, on the, on the transportation stuff, um, you were also, I mean, Ray has sent his email out because he found out about those signs, you know, the flashing signs that we could possibly get. And John and I have been, uh, working with Joyce Manchester a bit, you know, just identifying some transportation items. And, um, one of them was what Sasha just sent out the other day was the speed drop to over there on Route Two. And they did a study and they're gonna drop the speed limit from forty to thirty-five miles an hour. And there's public comment available for that on Wednesday at one. And I was gonna ask you, did you, I can't find the Zoom link on that. I've seen the guy, the email all about it, but, you know, in order, I know they said it's a hybrid meeting, but.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I haven't seen anything.
Well, yeah, check that out.
Cause I sent, what I've noticed is the guy sent you the info, the email and you accepted it. So I think maybe it's, I don't know, I didn't see it in his email.
So can you check on that Denise?
Yeah.
Because now I have a conflict and I can't do it.
So I could maybe call and at least they have someone there for that, for that aspect.
Okay.
And they did this comprehensive study. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read that email above.
So that thirty mile an hour, is that up to Gallagher Acres?
Well, no, it's gonna go from to thirty-five, which is what Route One Hundred does as it comes into that traffic light, you know, from the school. And now it's gonna go from, uh, basically Gallagher's Acres.
Where they dropped it to forty. Remember they dropped it to forty, from fifty to forty?
Yeah.
We did that a few years ago, probably longer than that now, but to forty. So that whole area is gonna be dropped to thirty-five. Laura Gams had submitted the letter requesting twenty-five, but we knew that probably wouldn't.
Well, with the study they did, they came up with these statistics that thirty, they could go to thirty-five.
And, and once that, once they change that, I'm gonna, or between Don, Joyce and myself, I'm gonna push for lowering the whole, the speed limit, all lowering that whole section of Route Two. Fifty is just too fast for that.
Roads are rolling up to where you're gonna go slower.
Well, I know, I know.
It does have its speed.
But now that, you know, you have the low income housing in there, you have, you know, it's a residential neighborhood. It just should not be that high.
Yeah.
So.
Especially the one that gets paid this year.
Yeah, he has to make it, yeah. And it's, you know, there's curves and stuff, so.
And the other item that is, we're trying to meet with someone from the state is here in the village, to see if the radar, the, what's it, radar speed sign, I think I would, I can't.
Speed feedback signs.
Feedback signs. The one that's by the, um, the post off the Spire Station, that one, right? We've talked about this before. We're trying to see if it could get moved to be on the, as you come into the village after you come over the bridge before Dennis Freckert's house. And it would say the speed there and to slow people down as they come into the village, past the town garage and around that corner.
That's where it should be for sure.
So we're trying to get to meet with someone from the state and that's, you know, to come out and actually physically look at it.
And.
And also talk about crosswalks.
And I'd like, actually, I'd like to bring them down past there. I got another call from Jerry Maynard. People are just speeding right there as fast as ever.
I know.
And it's just.
They're speeding everywhere.
I know, it's just, it's just off. And something just has to be done.
I just talked to someone from the sheriff's office today and, uh, we talked about, uh, Moretown talking to the sheriff's office. They're ready for us.
They're ready for us?
They're ready to move forward with something.
I thought, I thought.
That's not what they told us.
That's not what they told us. They sounded like they were understaffed.
Um.
Well.
I mean, that was, uh, that was state police that was on the staff.
No.
No, it was the sheriffs that wanted to try a contract.
They said both. Both of them said they were understaffed.
We can do them again tomorrow, so I'll see.
Yeah. Well, we'll check it out too.
Um, so that's sort of an old business item that, um, we're working on.
And so the pricing, it looks like you've got prices on both, the cart type.
The mobile and the fixed.
And the fixed. And with the fixed, we're gonna put, what would the fixed, not, not more in the village, it would be up on.
Wherever we want.
Wherever we want.
You know, obviously Moretown Mountain would be a prime.
Right.
Yeah.
I should think the mobile would make more sense. We could give them a way around.
At this point, um, you know, the mobiles are, I think, ten thousand apiece.
Yeah, I think it was because we talked about, we could get two.
The signs are about six thousand apiece.
Right. If you get the one that has the actual feedback.
Yeah, so, uh, at this point, you know, I think we should get two of the mobile ones and start placing them around town.
But we gotta switch these around like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, based on what Tom, what Sasha sent us today from, you know, the town wanted us to look at, it looks like, and John references earlier in the meeting, that there's some state statutes that are changing that are, and allow towns or municipalities to start to, um, uh, take control of, you know, of changing speed limits on, on their, on town roads, not on state roads still. Because, but it was in the past that we couldn't change them on a town road even without going through a whole process with the state. But is that how you read that?
No, I really think we can, we can put calming devices.
Oh.
Sorry, we could put speed bumps in the road.
But we can't, oh, right, traffic calming devices as well, right? But we can also change.
Oh, yeah.
From what I read, we could change a speed limit that's thirty-five, that's kinda cuckoo on some of these roads because people are to thirty or twenty-five, you know, at some point as we get along this.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is if you want it to be up below thirty-five, that's when you have to speed slow.
Well, that's, yeah, still, I don't know, maybe that one is, I don't know.
Do you know what ACT that is?
What's that?
What ACT that is, like through legislation that allows that?
Yeah, um.
Well, it's one eighty-one. The new one is one eighty-one.
I wrote that number in.
Yeah.
I would certainly like to see the speed limit reduced everywhere.
Yeah.
We'd have to re-sign everything.
No, no, I think, I know, but you could, you can do a five year plan. You can do it in ten years. It's not, doesn't have to be all done tomorrow, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, Moretown is, people are going sixty-five, seventy on that road.
I understand.
The speed was thirty-five now, so you could make it twenty-five, make it five.
And people still. I get it.
I, I.
We've lost all common courtesy.
If we've got the twenty thousand in the butt, I mean, I would really like to see if Sheriff's Department would be willing. Cause that's still our best route to go because the mobile units, you know, they're flash the speed, but that's not gonna catch anybody.
It's not gonna catch them.
So, you know.
I'd actually be a little worried on Moretown Mountain Road if it's being vandalized, to be honest. There's a lot of.
And that, yeah, sure, sure.
There's an option too with a computer in it.
Yeah, yeah, lots of steam for the mobile ones that will record that, that you can get or something.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
I thought the data that recorded was just the speed that people were going, but.
I think you can set them up for more.
Like license plate? So, yeah, that would be, that would be ideal.
I don't know, that's, you have to put correct labeling if you're gonna take pictures of people and vehicles going at speed limits. There's places in Killington that have that and there's very, very few places in Vermont that have that. But I'm not saying it probably won't be possible. You just might have to accomplish signage up there.
Right.
Yeah, it's probably connected with that, like you can't, law enforcement can't hide.
Exactly, yeah.
It's probably connected with that, like you can't hide.
So anyways, it's a work in progress.
The first route should be the sheriff's.
Obviously, yeah.
Or the state police. It looks like state police is definitely up. Either way, if we cannot get some enforcement, then we're gonna, you know, try to do our best with, with some sort of signage.
Right.
We're limited, you know, we, none of us can pull anybody over and say, okay, this is it. I'm giving you a ticket. We can't do that.
Right.
But I think a lot of people, not all of them, but a lot of people go fast and don't even realize it. They're just getting in their car and they're driving along. They don't realize it. There are people that live in these houses and, you know, I seen, you know, come down or up past my house and holy mackerel. You know, if I was backing out or crossing the road.
Yeah.
Well, that's what Maynard's doing for sure.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Who wants to go that fast on their road?
I've seen them right out of their grade. It's like marbles because they get that grain on the road currently.
Yeah.
And I've seen those rocks flying fifty, sixty feet, so.
Um, then there's a, I don't know, this is probably still, like, were we on old business?
Yeah, we should go on old business.
So I sent out to everybody on Thursday, um, this is, we got in the town hall, an RFP to, um, get the services of a, uh, design firm to take everything that we put together in the last year and get it, you know, make, get a design schematic together to, uh, for, you know, in a process, I don't know if you've got to read this, you know, and through some additional meetings and get, you know, narrow some of the changes down and get so that we can have a, you know, pick what we wanna do or not do. So that eventually in the schedule that's outlined in here, that we would have something ready for town meeting in March of twenty twenty-three, in the next March. So, um, but the, the point of this is, is that it shouldn't really go out like this week based on the schedule that we've put together. And we've reviewed it with Cheryl Lynn as far as some of the, uh, language in the back about, uh, you know, submitting it and insurance requirements and stuff. And, uh, you know, it's very elaborate about the proposal evaluation with the select board and the town, and the, you know, town hall committee and, you know, Moretown Library and such. And, um, so I'm hoping that we could, I'd like to, you know, get this out. I'm having a feeling that no one got a chance to really read it there.
I agree.
Yeah, so, um, this is, this is like, you know, here we are, this is now the next step in our going forward with truly, you know, fixing up the town hall and keeping it as a, uh, beautiful building and being a more of a community center. Uh, with the library, with the, you know, all the other uses that we have and some of the uses that we identified during more tests and walkthroughs and, you know, all the community engagement.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So do we need a motion to do that or just, or no?
I don't know.
I'd say, yeah, make a motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we send out the RFP for the Moretown Town Hall to architects?
Yeah, we have, uh, we've got, so far I have five firms, five or six firms that have expressed an interest in, in submitting a proposal, yeah.
I guess we don't need a specific way architects?
No, no, I mean, someone, I gotta go double back with someone, you know, it's been.
So that's my motion, that we send out the RFP to the architects for the Moretown Town Hall renovations.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, good, we go.
Okay, and, uh, one more thing, cause I know we still have to go back to some of the things, but, um, the town forest management's plan, uh, I think that, uh, pretty much between Ray, myself and Don, uh, Don and I will work on this one here and are part of the committee. And Ray, when we start the forest management plan and the tract of land in Moretown Mountain Road, Ray will be involved. So I'm planning, uh, to get, uh, all those parties in our committee. Oh, boy, well, there we go. We got, after one meeting and so on, um, together next week at some point. So I'll let you know the news so that you can post that.
Where are these committees all gonna start being posted on the website?
How are they on the website?
We have so many committees right now that are not posted.
It's non-stick process. Truck is helping to post more questions
Yeah.
because you can't really commit to interviewing, um, for working on it.
We have one committee that's been a major violation ever since it's been in existence. We may get people working on it tomorrow. So these committees need to get cleaned up, start putting on the website, start putting agendas out. I'm a real stickler of, because the transparency of this town is not too transparent.
Well, that is a good point, but definitely have to, have to work on that. Okay, um, any other old or new business? Good. See, none of them, um, did, um, Sasha, do you have any info reports communications?
I don't think we have. It's right there. Cheryl Lynn was, Cheryl Lynn was awarding a grant for the study on Route, sidewalk study on Route Two. So she needs a signature on that. And then there's a grant agreement for the other one that she's been working on. Something to do with that, I believe.
The letter of intent.
And then.
This one?
That one.
Okay. Okay. So grant agreement, tenant grant agreement. And advancement of a grant petition project note at Moretown TA twenty-two eleven. And there's a detailed description.
Is that a project that the state is coming out with, John? Is that what that is?
Yeah. Did you go through this?
I haven't.
Sasha or?
I haven't. Someone asked me to get it.
Okay. I nearly forgot my glasses.
You did that on purpose.
I see you have a new pair of glasses, right?
Okay, so this is the grant agreement for the, um, sidewalks over in Moretown North. A grant.
All right, okay.
What we just talked about.
Yeah, okay, I thought you said that was a different one.
There's two different ones. She needs a signature on that one, but I don't.
Sidewalk scoping study, Moretown Fremont Route One Hundred.
And this, this is on the hydrologically connected municipal roads.
It's what?
It's the, it's municipal roads grants and aid program. So that's the other thing Cheryl Lynn's applying for. Okay, gotcha.
What does that mean?
But that one, that's part of the, um, stuff that Martin was talking about, the municipal roads permit.
Oh, okay, for work on. Oh, okay, for, uh, work on class three roads?
Well, hydrologically, yeah, all, which pretty much all of the roads in Moretown are hydrologically connected.
Okay.
So...
And then that one can be awarded one.
The game together's washboard, you know, and stuff like that.
Okay. All right, that's just one signature, okay.
We have some other stuff.
Anything else here? That's one. The C D five hundred, we don't be signing those yet, so I guess pull that one.
And so...
And...
Those documents that he dropped off, did he, did he get all those?
No. He said he may have this afternoon, but it was after I left, so I'll send these to you guys tomorrow, so you can read them.
Yep.
Okay, the last thing that we did not do is approve in minutes of five sixteen.
That's a good idea. I make the motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I don't think I can vote on it, because I wasn't here.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can.
I read it, and...
Okay. One in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pause, okay. Anything else before we sign these and adjourn?
I hope Tom's back next time, this meeting's gone on a long time, John.
Yeah, John.
Yeah, my fault, there's too many guests.
Too much, too much of me, yeah.
This is old school. Drive home in the dark, way dark.
Well, I remember.
Some of those meetings just start at ten, eleven o'clock.
I remember back, back in the day.
Some of the Berlin ones go to like nine or ten o'clock.
When I was on the board in the early two thousands, yeah, we had, I would get home at eleven o'clock at night.
I remember they just would start at seven, ten.
Well, that's true, too, though.
That's where we're headed, you know, in this town, easy design, easy design, some kind of banking.
I try to, if it goes over two hours, you know, that means we just, we part, right. Let's focus, make bad decisions.
I'm signing a fleet pit, pit, fleet permit for Jerry Taber. Phil Taber? And for Cardinal Logistics Management Corporation. And for solid communications, uh, just a vehicle permit, and then a fleet permit for Griffin, Griffin and Son's exit page.
Come on, hang on to that, I'm not going to, we're here, you're on, you're putting the same...
What?
That, where we need one that's still questioned.
Oh. I don't think we're going to sign it.
No, no, I'll just go back and see. Come on, that's just...
Get in there, here it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, speak.
John, what's, what's the best way to reach you?
I'll give you my info and my, my, my record.
Okay, that's fine.
Boy, the writer's signature's just getting as big as mine.
That's what I do on my... Hold on. Sometimes it has no control.
That's the top one. Anything else, Tim?
The, the blue maps on the website, that's everything.
Are they all hard copies?
No, I mean, just blue maps.
Yes, and your hard copies as well.
Reports and communication. Dear Sherlin and the Moretown community, while thank you for your donation during our spring supporting member campaign. I, together, we help neighbors, or just together, we help neighbors connect, and we support local business and nonprofits. Your motion, donation makes a big difference, is Billy Michael, Valerie, and the entire Front Porch Forum team. Okay. Speak louder, sir, hold your peace, are you done?
Okay.
Okay.
I make the motion.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
All right, well, I think I'm done.